Good evening, everyone. Happy holidays. Thank you for joining us tonight at the regular board meeting being held here at University High School. I'm gonna pass it over to Ms. List so we can do a call to order.
Thank you. Good morning, good evening. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10 colon 4 dash 6 et sec, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising in the Star Ledger, El Nueva Coqui, Haiti Progress, and Luso Americano newspapers, and by distribution to administrative offices in the Newark Public Schools. A copy of this meeting notice was forwarded to City Hall for posting. This is a regular board meeting, Tuesday, November 27, 2018. It's 6:30.
If I can ask Board Member Haynes to lead us in the flag salute? If I can ask Board Member Hill to lead us in the flag salute? Thank you.
Our president's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now I'd like to turn it over to Principal Mendez, who, I'm sorry, broke off.
Mr. Bledsoe?
Present.
Ms. Gaddy?
Present.
Ms. Gomez?
Present.
Ms. Haynes?
Present.
Ms. Hill?
Present.
Ms. Norton?
Ms. Owens?
Present.
Mr. Padilla?
Ms. Garcia?
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you, Ms. List. And now we'll turn it over to the principal, Principal Mendez, to bring us the principal greetings.
Thank you. Superintendent León, board members, Deputy Superintendent Fitzhugh, Chief of Staff Nazario, parents, students, district staff members, and stakeholders, welcome to the University High School of Newark, New Jersey, home of Phoenix. As some of you may know, University was originally created as a program called School Within a School, housed at South Side High School, which is now Malcolm X Shabbos. University became a standalone school in 1977 and was located on High Street. It was then moved to Clinton Place in 1983. Some notable alumni include Mayor Baraka, R&B singer Faith Evans, professional basketball players Nadirro McKenneth, Lauren Mincy, and Brittany Sykes. Author, Niobe O'Brien, motivational speakers, authors and doctors, Dr. Remek Hunt, Dr. Sampson Davis, and Dr. George Jenkins, also known as The Three Doctors. I am not nearly as knowledgeable as the people I just mentioned, however, I am also a graduate of University High School. University High School was founded on the principles that still serve to drive our vision forward: responsibility for our students and their achievements, integrity in our values and goals, service to our community, and excellence in our academic and social endeavors. We are proud to host the last board meeting of 2018. At this time, please sit back and enjoy as our marching band, under the direction of Mr. Dixon, the band dancers coached by Ms. Lockett, and cheerleaders coached by Ms. Egypt Vernon, perform for your entertainment. Thank you.
Nobody rocks like UHS.
R-O-C-K, rock with the best. Nobody rocks like UHS. R-O-C-K, rock with the best. Nobody rocks like UHS.
Let's go, Phoenix, let's go!
G-O-G, you and I, let's go, Phoenix, let's go! G-O-G, you and I, let's go, Phoenix, let's go! G-O-G, you and I, let's go, Phoenix, you know.
We'll take down any team that comes our way.
What can we say? The mighty Phoenix don't play. We'll take down any team that comes our way. What can we say? The mighty Phoenix don't play. We'll take down any team that comes our way.
What can we say?
The mighty Phoenix don't play. We'll take down any team that comes our way.
One, two?
Phoenix!
Let's go, Phoenix!
Thank you, Mr. Mendez, the great performance from the marching band and the dancers, and for having us tonight. And now we're gonna move on to recognitions. Our first recognition out of four recognitions tonight will be the Arts High School Latin Band.
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, it is our honor at this time to present these certificates to our students. The first group of students that are being recognized is, in fact, the Arts High School Latin Band, always under the direction of Mr. Kenneth Fairfax. We have Omar Rodriguez. Rayner Perez. Matthew Fajardo. Shamar McPherson.
If the principal, I think Mr. Pedro's in the audience.
Yes, Mr. Pedro, you could come join us.
Thank you.
Jalen Shifer. Omar Augusto. Steve Pinzon. Assad Collins. Mustafa Daniels. Daniela Montero. And Kevin Herrera. Oh, I see it, it's here. Mark Exum.
Mark is my new drummer.
Yeah, Mark is an incredible drummer. All right, let's take a picture of board members. Mr. Fairfax, let's go. A lot of people are not aware of this, but the band, the band, the Latin Band at Arts High School is the Latin Band that has performed not only throughout this city, but throughout this entire incredible county, and in fact, throughout the state. They are absolutely incredible. They are tapped at every interval during all times of the year. They are that incredible. They performed at the August District Staff Convocation in front of over 6,000 staff members. Let's give them a big round of applause. The start of this year, one second, the start of this year, we had Newark's Academic Challenge for Kids. You had to have a GPA of 2.5 or higher. You had to choose to care. You had to come to school. You had to be present. This was a challenge to every class in this school district. We have close to 2,000 seniors who have been working really hard, never having received this type of challenge before. Over 2,400 seniors, and about 1,700 of them are meeting that challenge right now. So all of their names were put into a raffle. And one of the students that's on the stage is one of the students who meets that challenge. This district, this district has, this district has three campaigns. This student understands what it means to be number one. One, one of the campaigns is that we are Newark, and that means we are number one. And because he understands that he is from Newark, and that he is number one, he's gonna get the first laptop tonight. He performed at the John F. Kennedy Center in Washington, DC this year, in front of world-renowned performers, of which he will definitely get on that stage with that honor one day. Ladies and gentlemen, Jalen Shifer. And it comes with, and it comes with, it comes with the kids. We're gonna move up. Come on, we're gonna, we're gonna all be in the picture with them. How about that? Is that all right? Let's go, like that? There we go? We're good? We're good? All right. Congratulations. Proud of you. You are a great example of excellence in our city. Excellence in our city. Proud of you. All right, let's give them all a big round of applause. They are headed for a major performance at the Montclair Country Club. Yes. We're allowing the guests at the Montclair Country Club to enjoy the greatness in the city of Newark. All right, up next. Oops. You know what? I keep, I keep forgetting. I'm getting old, and I keep forgetting. Mr. Fairfax, keep coming. Mr. Fairfax is an art teacher, Mr. Pedro, why don't you come join him? Mr. Fairfax is the art teacher at Arts High School, and he assumed the responsibility of the director of the Latin Band. He assumed it when no one else wanted to do it. He assumed it because he understands his culture, and he understands the importance of celebrating it by celebrating all others. And he does not like the attention. He appreciates the fact that we honored his students, but we're doing one thing more tonight. Can you open that? We're not playing. Sorry, I forgot who's watching. This is Newark, New Jersey, y'all. There it is. It's upside down, upside down. Put it right. You read it? The Arts High School Latin Band has just received $2,500. No. He lied.
We'd like to thank the Newark Board of Ed to help the students, because when we raise money, it goes to the students. But we'd like to thank Newark Board of Ed for contributing to the Arts High School Latin Band Fund, $5,000.
All right. Congratulations. All right. The board members are gonna stay up here. So we have an incredible honor to give to a young lady who performed already on the stage this evening, Zariel Chandler, from University High School. She, she not only did an incredible job during this volleyball season, she was nominated to the NJSCA All-Star Volleyball Team. The Central High School Speech Team has been distinguishing itself for the last couple of years, but unlike ever before, this year has been an incredible start to their year. At the Princeton University National Debate and Speech Tournament of just last month, there is only one high school in America, not in New Jersey, not in Essex County, not just in Newark, but in the United States of America, that received the top honor: Central High School. They're coming up: Yamin Reddick, Devon Sargent, Jalen Harville, Katrina Lamontiere, Hasna Ali, Zawari Kabazimya. Congratulations. Tatiana Wamosa, Isaiah Briggs. Tatiana? Okay? We have Coach Filbert and Coach Gurion, let's come up, please. Let's move back a little bit. All right. All right, let's give them a big round of applause. But not so fast. Mr. Filbert, come here. Mr. Filbert has been coaching speech in the Newark Public Schools for a couple of years. Most of the money that funds this team comes out of his pocket. Not tonight. Please open this envelope. It's not always the amount, it's the thought that counts, okay? Ready? How much?
$1,000.
All right, yes. Let's hear it. A big round of applause for Mr. Filbert and the speech team at Central High School. All right, let's give them a big round of applause. Thank you so much, thank you so much. The Newark Student Union, these incredible young people have been assisting and directing unlike any entity before, and it's a group of students. This will round up our recognitions this evening, and I ask the following students to join us on the stage. But before I do that, this is an example of what this young man is all about. He provided testimony at the start of July indicating the importance of civics in our schools. While there were other adults who were also talking about the importance of it, and trust me, I partake in sharing it too, it was something that was going to eventually happen. It didn't necessarily was gonna be something that was happening in July, but his passion, coupled with the passion of board members and members of the Newark Civic Trustees, they began to make it clear of the importance of doing this now. He is, in fact, responsible for the ballot question being asked to students in our school district. In addition to that, he's the reason why I was moved to do this vote of registration for our seniors. But here's an example of who he is. He assisted me in identifying the names of the students being recognized this evening. And because the person who was actually writing the names on these certificates, they did not know that he was an actual student. That's how good this student is. And this is how good he is, that he did not list his name on the list of students to get certificates. So I want him to come up first. His name is Bradley Gonmia. And joining him on the stage, Devin Kaiser. Isaiah Thornton. Tremaine West. Oh, yes, oh, good, good, good. Come on. Azay Williams, and I know she's not here. Will you hold Azay's?
Yes.
Okay. Ibrahim Waziri. Zae Braswell. Melissa Rojas. Anna Calderon. And Eliel Hernandez. Can you hold those? Alright. There we go. Alright, we have all the students in? Alright, here we go. Oh, don't do that. Yeah, we're good. Alright, let's give them a round of applause, but not so fast. So when we did this raffle of seniors, see, we had a college fair in October, and we raffled every single student into the pool. They had to complete a survey. The student that just was recognized a couple of minutes ago, Jalen, he did that. He had to have a 2.5. The student that we're recognizing right now also has that, actually has above a 3.5, actually has above a 4.0. And so that student gets the second laptop tonight. Hold this. Madam President, can you hold this? Can we hold that? So let me tell you this. When adults don't necessarily move you and you decide to move yourselves as a student in this school district, you can push curriculum, you could push thousands of students to vote, you could push many students to become voters in this state, and you can be a part of the change. Bradley Gonmia! Alright, round of applause. Madam President and board members, as we all take our seats, let's give all of these students a big round of applause. Yes. We can do it in the arts, we can do it in athletics, we can do it in the academics, and we can do it in the social activism. Welcome to Newark. Nothing traditional about what we just did. It's just public education at its best.
Alright, that was an exciting start. And now we're going to move to item 6.0, which is the approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion, please?
Motion by Ms. Haynes.
Second.
We have minutes November 12th, November 20th, and November 27th. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any objections? Motion carries. Next, we need a motion to amend the agenda.
Madam Chair, motion to amend the agenda.
Motion by Mr. Blitso. This is a motion to amend the agenda to add a motion to adopt, re-adopt with amendments the admission policy, file code 5111, and to add it to the agenda at item 13.4, new item 13.4, which is within the General Counsel Legal Matters. So Mr. Blitso made the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Haynes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Alright, thank you. And our student rep wasn't able to be with us here tonight, so we're going to move on to the Board Chair's report. And I would just like to say good evening, fellow board members, Superintendent Leon, administrators, students, families, and constituents. Thank you for giving your time and enjoying us on this chilly evening. The first topic is our Global Ambassadors that went to Ireland returned this Saturday. We are super excited that they came back and shared their experiences in Ireland. They had an amazing time. We are so excited that Newark will be hosting the Global Ambassadors from Ireland this upcoming April in 2019. The next item is the breakfast with the superintendent for the West Ward, families and students. It was held at Speedway Academies. The final breakfast is scheduled for January 5th at Camden Street School for the Central Ward families. We're looking forward to hearing what Superintendent Leon has learned at his breakfast series that we will have held, which he has held in each ward. Earlier this month, the Newark Board of Education hosted its 32nd Annual Citywide Title I Parent Conference, where the theme was "Dawn of a New Day." Parents were well represented with more than 500 in attendance. Parents got an opportunity to participate in a variety of informational workshops and received helpful resources from facilitators, panelists, and vendors. Parents also witnessed great performances from our talented students from across the district, who entertained them with songs, dancing, poetry recital, and music. Parents and guardians had a chance to engage in conversation with the board members who serve on the Community Engagement Committee, which are Board Members Haynes, Board Member Gomez, Board Member Johnson, and myself. They shared their topics, concerns, and ideas. Parents surfaced topics like getting parents more involved in the board meetings, more civic engagement, and increased bilingual program. It was nice to hear the candid thoughts and concerns from parents in an unillustrated platform. This conference will be hard to top, but we are looking forward to even a better experience for parents and guardians next year. Kudos to the staff from the Family and Community Engagement, Grants and Early Childhood, departments who sponsored, planned, and organized a meaningful conference, to Margarita Muniz, who runs that department, her staff, and for our parents and guardians. After there's a round of applause because it was a great event. On Saturday, December 8th, was the first school fair under local control at Barringer High School. Hundreds of parents, guardians, and students crowded the gym and the cafeteria of Barringer High School to learn about our schools and to talk to staff. All of our schools were represented and it was clear that principals and their staff were passionate about their schools and excited to share the news of what's happening in all of our buildings. Saturday, we had a great retreat at Science Park High School with board members and staff. We covered a number of important design designated to increase our knowledge and help us to become better board members. Topics included strategic planning, the Transition Plan Clarity 2020, the Budget Process, Curriculum Assessment, Policy Adoption, and Amendment. I want to remind parents and guardians that the school application window opened on December 3rd and will close on February 15th. Students in transitioning grades who, who are new to the district and those who may be looking to, for a different school may apply before February 15th deadline. If you're not interested in changing schools, you do not have to complete this application. We also want to thank the IHOP of Newark, who will be hosting a breakfast for dinner tomorrow on Bergen Street for 25 Newark Public Schools families, and which also came out of the Division of Community Engagement. Thank you IHOP for calling and extending this dinner to Newark families and other surrounding families, but we identified 25. This is, this is a truly wonderful and magical time of year. It is the time of year where, when we celebrate the spirit of giving, expressing love, gratitude, and life. On behalf of my fellow board members, I wish you all a happy and safe holiday season. This ends the Chairperson's report. Thank you so much. And I move it out on to item 9.0, which is the Superintendent's report. Superintendent Leon.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and all of the guests here in attendance. The way that we began this meeting is just indicative of the greatness that is in our schools. Our students are incredible, and when they do incredible things, they are to be recognized. This is not thanking them for doing what they're supposed to do. This is to honor and thank them for the greatness that lives in our fine city. The teaching staff members are just examples of incredible teachers in our schools who are committed and dedicated to our children, and they are led by wonderful principals. Our objective is to make sure that we change the trajectory of where we have been to take this city where it will go. Attendance in this school district is extremely important. We need our students to school and to school on time. We began an attendance campaign in August with the staff where I asked all of my staff members to give me five. I needed them to give me five students to school on the first day of school. I needed them to make sure that those students and their parents were aware of the importance of coming to school. Last year, we know that the students who attended school did better academically and on student achievement data than the students who did not come to school. This year, September, October, and November, we have had an average daily attendance above 90% with the exception of only three days this school year. And our students deserve a big round of applause for that. In the month of October alone, we had 5,500 students attend school more than last October. We have just begun, last week in fact, to hire back seven attendance counselors. We're excited about that. I'm proud to report that seven additional attendance counselors have been onboarded to begin on January 2nd. This comprises of all of the groups of attendance counselors that were required to be hired back if in fact they wanted to. And to let everyone know that during the month of January, we will actually be hiring attendance counselors. So those who have applied, please know that we will begin the interview process well into the month of January, and we're excited about that. In the last couple of weeks, I've spent a lot of my time with our students and our teachers at the Abbott Leadership Institute. I had the incredible honor of talking with for an hour and a half with some of our best and brightest students, not only in the schools that people know to be Newark Public Schools, but in schools that people understand to be charter schools, as well as students who do not reside in the great city of Newark. And I share those different types of students because the brilliance that was in the room is something that I'm just proud of, the leadership of the good folks at ALI. Ms. Berryman in particular for her leadership of those students. Last week, we launched a major initiative in this city, one that will distinguish it in the country. It is Girls Who Code. We are in fact identifying 20 young ladies in every middle school and high school where we will actually teach them coding skills because we need our young ladies to assist us in solving some of the greatest problems that we have in this world that have been plagued by my generation, by generations before mine. And we actually need our young ladies to help us get it together. And we're extremely excited about this initiative impacting every single one of our young ladies in the years to come. Since we can't wait, one of the things that we've done is begun to purchase one-to-one student-to-computer ratios in our school district. This means that every student that attends our schools will in fact have a computer in every single one of the classrooms as they would actually need to them. This is a $2 million initiative that we began to purchase these computers in, last month, in November, and they are already arriving in our schools. And we are extremely excited about the students having this opportunity. In addition to this meeting with my students, I had meetings with members of staff. Last week in particular, I met with all of the coaches of the high school sports teams to make them aware of what our policies are in athletics, as well as to obviously wish them an awesome year. We already began the winter season. We have in fact successfully completed the fall season. And we wanted to make sure that the entire coaching staff was aware of the assistance and support that they will get, not only from a budgeting perspective, but from leadership and training perspective as well. While the budget has already been set last year for this year, we will work closely with our principals to make sure that the needs of all of our athletics programs are in fact addressed when we prepare the budget for the following year. I take this opportunity to let anyone who's watching this televised broadcast that the holiday tournament for basketball for our young ladies and young men has already begun. And during the dates of the 28th, the 29th, and 30th of December, we will be hosting the final games. And we invite everyone to join us. Elementary teachers in English Language Arts and Mathematics, as well as our English and Mathematics teachers in the high schools, had a 90-minute, four 90-minute sessions with me, one-on-one, with regards to what are issues as it relates to how we're utilizing our materials, whether it's textbooks or online programs, how it is best for us to move forward to better assist our students. And I'm extremely excited about the work that will occur with our teaching staff members moving forward. Tomorrow is an important day where dads in the city will assist us in a toy drive in our Early Childhood Center in the North Ward, and we're extremely excited about that event. Not to end this part of the Superintendent's report on a sour note, but to transition me in terms of where we're going to go, I must share with all of you that mental health is a serious problem. One of the things that we will be doing in this school district is we're preparing a scope of work that will be put out through a request for proposal for suicide prevention district-wide trainings of every single one of our staff members. Not only classroom teachers, not only our principals, because they definitely need that training, but in fact for all of our staff members district-wide, and I look forward to that work ahead. As we're going into this holiday season, I share with you that there's incredible work moving forward. I am asking this board to vote in a couple of important decisions this evening. In particular, I'm going to be conducting a significant needs assessment in every aspect of this school district. And I am in fact needing the board's assistance to approve a couple of the resolutions that I know that are before them tonight. These needs assessments go into our facilities, every single building, from the roof to the boiler and every classroom in between. As it relates to the academic piece, curriculum, every English Language Arts classroom and mathematics, an aggressive attempt at addressing what are in fact the needs of this district. I share with you this, there are five legal matters that I presented to this board that I learned when I assumed the role of the superintendent, and there are five legal matters that can in fact plague us. We are Newark and we can accept the challenges as they come before us and overcome them like easy obstacles, because that's all that they are. But I must share with you that I'm in need of assistance to actually get through every area from the finance aspect of this district. We do not need to do an audit, we actually need an autopsy. And ultimately- And ultimately, at the end, the work that we will do will not only highlight blame, it will do something more important than that. It will provide us assistance and direction on how to actually move this district forward. I am excited about my council of students that I will be meeting with in January, and I extend all of the students, not only the ones that were recognized this evening, but all of the students that dare to watch this program, that we expect great things from our students. And when we get these great things, our students get great things back. January 16th is an important evening in the city of Newark. At Central High School at 6:00 PM, we begin our first of a series of community conversations on the strategic plan of this district. There are a number of roundtables that will in fact stream out of this one meeting. We will have a number of meetings throughout the rest of January, February, March, leading us into April. And I invite everyone who is willing to say that Newark can be better to dare to show up. January 16th, Central High School, 6:00 PM. The first community conversation of a series of conversations that will help move this school district forward. I'm extremely proud of our young people that we recognize today and the staff members who joined them. Madam President, that ends this superintendent's report.
Wow. That was our Christmas present. Thank you, Superintendent Leon. And now we move on. And now we will move on to public participation.
Public participation at board meetings is intended to allow individual members of the public to address the board on issues of public concern and not intended as a forum for extended conversation or two-way dialogue with the members, board members, or district officials. The board chair, superintendent, or designated may respond to questions either at the end of the session or at a later time. Public participation at a board public meeting will be limited to 90 minutes. These time allotments may be extended by the board chair at her discretion. All speakers, regardless of whether he or she represents an organization, will be allotted no more than three minutes for comment, unless an exception applies. Time limits for all speakers will be adhered to. There will be no sharing or granting of speaking time to others. Speakers must be present when their name is called. All speakers will be required to give their names and addresses. The public participation portion of the meeting will be limited to 90 minutes. Examples of unacceptable behavior that will not be permitted include, but are not limited to naming district employees and engaging in personal attacks, racial slurs, excessive loudness, calling out, yelling, generally disruptive behavior, attempting to disrupt the meeting or inciting others to do so. The superintendent or board chairperson may interrupt any speaker or terminate any individual's speaking privilege if the speaker's comments are disruptive or obscene. An individual may be cautioned that a personally-directed statement may be slanderous or defaming, and that the individual may be liable for his or her comments. Attempts to hijack or filibuster the proceedings, repeated interrupting or badgering the board chair or district officials, repetitive or truculent speech, or other disregard for the rules of decorum will not be tolerated and may subject the individual or group to removal from the meeting. If necessary, the board meeting will be adjourned.
Thank you very much, Ms. List. And now we move on to the first speaker, Bradley Gonmaya?
Gonmaya.
Gonmaya.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Bradley Gonmaya, Levitt Claryon Lane. Today, I'd like to discuss or talk about, ask questions about the admissions process for magnet schools. I attended the high school fair. It was on Saturday, I forgot, the 8th. Yeah, I attended the high school fair the 8th, and it still wasn't very clear to many of... It was, first off, it was good, it was great. I think it was awesome to have like a place for students to come and get to know more about the high schools. I think it was also great to let people know about the new academies that are occurring and the partnerships between schools. But one of the things that was still unclear, I think especially for, I stood by the Science Park table, and especially for the Science Park table and the people that came up and asked questions about the admissions process, it wasn't clear how the admissions process would actually be handled or what the admissions process was actually going to be. Some people asked specifically, like, what are you considering in terms of like admitting me into your high school? And I'd like to clarify or establish a definition of magnet high schools. We can synthesize one that we both agree on, but one that we agreed on in the Newark Students Union is that a magnet high school is basically a school that works to provide students with the opportunity to specialize in and excel at what interests them most. The most, the key component of that is what interests them. If a student is able to learn or very really focus on what interests them or what they like to learn, then learning is less of a burden, and they would want to learn and actually work hard to do what they want to do. So I'd like to ask a few questions about when it's going to be communicated with the actual, like when? Because I know, all right, let me move on to the admissions test. So I asked about the admissions test at a prior meeting before the December 8th high school fair. I asked my principal about how in particular the school is gauging the interest of the students that they are admitting. Because even on the, even on Science Park High School's website, it says we give priority to students that exhibit an interest in science. For the past few years, I know that not to be true in any sense of truthfulness. They don't give any priority to students that actually exhibit interest in science. So I'm looking at how they were, how like... I know that there's going to be a component of the admissions test that tries to gauge the interest. When are the high school principals going to be notified about this so that they know what they're doing? And then also, who exactly is grading the admissions test? So like, is it the high schools themselves? So how do they gauge that? And then also, just letting them know about things like the admissions test. And then also, I've heard about the interview that's going to be happening for people that are on the bridge. Just letting them know about that because I know at least the administration at my school doesn't. So letting them know so that people applying can know too.
Superintendent Leon.
Thanks, Bradley. I appreciate your questions. But one of the reasons why I'm answering them in particular, and especially during this broadcast, is because it is actually new. And I realize that for students over the last seven years, taking a test to go to a magnet high school is new to you. Unfortunately, it's not new to people who've been required to be administered an admissions test in this school district in order for you to be admitted. And so I agree with the definition that you have shared and that that has been discussed with the Newark Student Union, that the magnet high schools were always supposed to be a high school where the student had to have an interest in what that specialty was. If you love science and you can't sing, you are not into drama, and you cannot play an instrument, and you're not into video production, then arts high school is probably not the school that would interest you. So what we want in the admissions test is to be able to gauge that. So the admissions test is going to assist us. It's only one test for all of the magnet high schools, and it will define for us to the best extent possible what are the interests of the students when they actually apply. There'll be content areas on the test as well, in the area of literacy and in mathematics. But ultimately, we will gauge what are your interests? What moves you to actually define if the school is the right choice for you to attend inevitably, if in fact you get matched to that school? So the idea about who grades it currently, right now, we are in the process of finalizing the test. I have received a copy of it. There are a couple of questions that I will add to the test. And I'm looking forward to providing a really good quality timing of an exam that will be worth our students' time. As it relates to the interviews, oh, who defines the admissions criteria? The way that it has worked in the last seven years is that every magnet high school has its own admissions criteria. We will allow the schools to create their own admissions criteria, but unlike in the past, we will actually review it and be required to approve it to see if in fact it's consistent with the direction that the district is in fact going in. Admissions tests, interviews, all filter into the schools the students we want there. It does not filter students out. This is about giving more students an opportunity to actually attend the schools. So as it relates to interviews, Bard High School is the one high school that currently interviews all of its candidates. There are a couple other magnet high schools that are indicating that they will do that as well. And in addition to that, that some will actually utilize that if they need to create some type of a tiebreaker in determining eligibility of students, that they will in fact interview. So all of the students, all of the high schools, the magnet high schools, will have an interview process, but not every magnet high school will interview every candidate. And if you have any other questions with members of the student union at the end of this meeting, I'll be more than happy to entertain them. Okay? Thank you.
Our next speaker, Malcolm White Walker. Good evening, Malcolm.
Good evening.
How are you?
Good.
Okay, if you can state your name and address for the record.
My name is Malcolm White Walker, and I live at 784 Clay Avenue, APD 201.
Okay, you may begin.
So what I want to speak about today is, at my school is a few, well, most of the teachers, they are very disrespectful to students. Like when I try to, when I walk by or if I say something to them, like when I, when we're in the class and talking to them, they're very disrespectful and rude in their ways of speaking. And one of the gym teacher at my school, he had called me a loser, and he was trying to be cool with all the other students, and they had laughed at me, but I just took it in. And he called, he called me white when... And he called me a lot of things. Like, most of the teachers, they say racial slangs, and they see, they say things to hurt their students, and they say things to make me mad, but it's not. They're trying, they're trying, they are trying to be with the other students, and they think that it's funny. It's not funny to hurt someone who knows who they are, but you should, you still, words can hurt, but you already know who you were. But I already know who I am, but the words really hurt and had hurt me, and I don't like what they had said to me. And I wish that they could get trained to not be so. Like, they say for children not to be disrespectful to adults. And they're like, they're saying that they're a parent at school, but if you're going to be like a parent, you have to treat us as, if you, if you want to be treated correctly, treat us how you, treat us how you want to be treated by, to you. And I think that's how, that's how you have to be. Because it's not, it's not nice to treat somebody how you don't want to be treated. And then when somebody says something about you, you want to get mad and you want to get hurt and all that. But I'm the one who's the victim when you first started about me, but I'm the one who's the beat. I'm not, I'm not the first one who's supposed to be hurt and try to hurt somebody else. You just, you just tell the adult, and some adults, like some adults don't deal with it. And they, they just think they, when an adult tells you something, they think it's just, just me saying it. But I'm not just saying I'm meaning it. Because I'm, I'm not just saying I'm meaning it. The teachers really need some, need some training to be respectful to students.
Which school?
About my running. Madam Chair, board members, welcome.
Thank you. Um, co-board members, members of the public, I apologize for my tardiness. My son had a school holiday performance. Madam Chair, moving forward, can we not allow children to state their address since they are minors, and this is being recorded?
They should just state the school.
Or just state the school, but not their home address? I'm just for the safety of the child. This is being recorded. If you can look this up. And so they just say their school.
We will definitely discuss it in the Governance Committee. Great recommendation. Mom is with him. This isn't the first time that Malcolm speaks before us. And we've addressed all the issues at the school, but we will take it into consideration at the Governance Committee.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Jacob Brady. Not appearing. Next speaker, Isaiah Thornton. Isaiah, can you just please state your name and the school you attend?
Okay.
Thank you.
My name is Isaiah Thornton. I go to American History High School. So agreeing to the board, I would like to say thank you because like y'all appreciated us, and I gave thanks to us for what we do. But I would like to say thanks to y'all too, especially the superintendent, because he helped us with the student referendum. And without him, it would not have, it would not have came true. So...
You guys got out of the vote, 600 registrations. That was a big hit.
I'm kind of nervous. So we have some, we have some... Sorry, I'm going to start with this. In 2017, student representative election, 15.89% of the student voted out of all the schools, out of all the high schools that I know. In 2018, for the same election, only seven, it went up by, it went up to by 2%. That's not very good, that's not very good. You know what I'm trying to say. But in 2018 student referendum, 31 student, 31% of high school students didn't vote, which is, which is a hu, uh, accom- accomplishment for us. But I am ashamed to say that the 8th graders outvoted the high school students, which is a huge problem because they would really focus on high school students and getting them to vote more. Because how can we have like middle schoolers outvoting us? I'm going to give them props. I'm recognizing them too. Because like, they doing what we should be doing right now. I would like to reflect on what we did right and what we did wrong, or what's to, what we could do better for the next, for next year. And I would like to start with the good stuff because everybody liked good stuff first. Emailing and notifying the principals about it was a, was a huge success for us and for the superintendent because without him, this principal would not, probably never got back to us or it would never, it would never happen. Some bad things that happened. Time, we kind of slipped on the time because we gave high school students and elementary students two to one days to vote, which was our bad in that year because we should have been more on it. I think that's all. Thank you.
Next speaker, Poppy Roberts. Next speaker, Christopher Koenig. Next speaker, Christopher Koenig.
Hi, Chris Koenig, 155 Berkeley Avenue, Bloomfield, New Jersey. Normally, when I come up to this podium, I talk extensively about the district's failings and special needs. Today, I'm going to talk about Central High School's failing and special needs. The reason I'm speaking more directly is because despite relentless action on my part and the part of my peers, the teachers at Central High School, there doesn't seem to be a lot of action regarding some of the major concerns that I have. The first concern I have is that all of my concerns have been dismissed. When I say dismissed, what I mean is an excuse is made, a deferral is made, or it's flat-out called excuses for bad teaching. That's concerning to me. A little bit of information that was released earlier this year, and is public information, as any teacher can request the schedule of a school through their union rep, and I have an E-Central's union rep. We have twenty teachers who teach less than five classes, but I am constantly reminded that staffing levels are the reason that I don't have a co-teacher in my classroom, despite having students who require ICS or resource room designation. What's most concerning to me is that each administrator that I meet, from the very lowest to the very highest, treats this as news, and I don't really understand that. Because when I'm asked for the data on any of my students, an administrator supposedly, at least according to my PD, should be able to walk into my room and ask me, "Hey, why's that table together?", and I should be able to give them a data-driven response. And so, I'm failing to understand how this got lost. I'm failing to understand how, after years of talking about special needs, out of compliance issues and class size issues, I find myself once again teaching a class of twenty-eight students with a number of special needs that's much higher than it probably ought to be, but that I'll leave in specific, so as to protect the identities of some of those children. It's very hard to run a classroom when students must by law be held to different levels of accountability. It's really hard to explain to one group why action is not being taken on another, when I know that that reason is protected under confidentiality. Makes it hard to run a classroom, and I hope that we can get some help. Thank you.
Next speaker, Danielle Jeffress.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Danielle Jeffress. I reside at 634 Clinton Avenue, and I have, I have a son that special needs is in the high school, and I'm here 'cause I'm concerned, and I'm a parent of CPAT, I would attend meetings, parent engagement, I'm involved with everything, but I'm concerned that my son, um, the bus system is not picking him up properly. At the end of November, I think, at the end of November, I'm so glad that y'all removed Mayor Bus Company, because at the end of November, they did not pick up my son, not one day. He goes to Central High School, half of the class was missing for a week, and it's concerning 'cause I'm a parent that works, and it's something when they don't pick up your child and they ready, and it was giving, giving you answers, "Oh, we gonna be there tomorrow", when they know they wasn't coming in the first beginning. I'm, I'm on board with this, um, the bus system has, something has to be done, it really has, and I'm so glad that y'all got rid of Mayor Bus Company, I'm so glad, because as of yesterday, a new bus company started, because my son cannot miss any days. He's missing learning time, he's missing a lot because they're not picking him up. The new bus company started yesterday, they picked him up at nine forty-four in the morning. He was on, he missed the third period class, he missed all the way up to like third period. By the time he got to school, it's time to go to lunch. I'm here to thank Mr. Leon for doing something, Ms. Wilson, Ms. Spill, Quanette Spill, for doing something, because this is something that children are missing days of school. I'm a parent that works. I'm concerned because they missing, and I'm at work. He needs to be picked up. I had to go pick him up this afternoon, but hopefully tomorrow, everything should be situated with the buses where they gonna be at my door. They assured me today that they coming between six fifty-five and seven ten in the morning tomorrow. I'm gonna be there, I'm home, I'm gonna be there to make sure, but I'm tired of the bus company, companies giving me the runaround. You know when you talking to me that you're not gonna pick up my son the next day? Stop telling me you gonna pick up my son and don't pick up my son. And that's what they doing to the parents, they giving the parents runarounds. We have a job. He's missing learning time that he shouldn't be missing, or I have to leave work to go pick him up because they not picking him up, or they not coming to the house to pick him up. But thank you. I hope something is being done about it. Thank you once again.
Superintendent Danielle.
Uh, yeah, uh, this is Jeffress, but you know, we, I, I apologize for the experience that you're having right now. We will make sure that any and all of the services that he needs, to make sure that he is as whole as possible, are made. Uh, you're going to see Dr. Santos right behind you over there. He's the assistant superintendent of the high schools. He's gonna give you, I would like for you to give him your number, and he's gonna give you a, a number to reach me, and I, I would like for you to reach me by eight in the morning to see, to make sure that in fact the bus has shown up. Is that okay? All right, thank you, ma'am.
Next speaker, Thomas Ibyang. Not appearing. Next speaker, Patience Roberts. Next speaker, Denise Cole. She's here.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Roger Leon. You satisfied? I put the super on the front of it? Okay. Um, Denise Cole, 765 Forest Street, North New Jersey. I came before you, Superintendent Leon, so you can let the community know what the South Ward Children Alliance are doing with the, I think it's five schools that they identified that they're supposed to be putting services in, or services are they putting in, how will those services be implemented in the school, and how will our parents and children participate in those services? And identify the schools also. I did go to the South Ward meeting that John James gave, but that was a forest and it was controlled, and we didn't get the information we should have gotten. Is Malcolm X Shavas still a community school, and is, is it the feeder high school, still the feeder high school for the community schools? And also, what is happening with putting cursive writing into the high schools? Because I'm still getting complaints from different banks about children not being high school students graduating that can't even write a payroll signature. So, that's something that's easily implemented, Roger, into a high school, so that they, I mean, like, they gotta sign a, and I don't know if they signed, when they signed the application for their registration, did they print their name, or did they sign their name? Because we have a lot of children who do not know how to write cursive writing. Also, I wanna talk about seventy-five thousand dollars. I would like the chief counsel to please explain or give me a copy of the policy that shows how the seventy-five thousand dollars is supposed to be given to North Public School, because in the North Public School policy, there are specific ways that money is supposed to come to us. And pay-to-play definition is exactly what's happening with that seventy-five thousand dollars at George Washington Carver. If Team Academy is still gonna hold on to it, and they're still gonna choose the vendors, and it doesn't come back into our budget and identify, because we have specific guidelines so that malice and malfeasance and, um, that can't take place in our budget. We have to specifically track money that comes into our school and how it's being used. So, I, I'm asking you to tell me what the regulation for traditional public school is, and why is they holding on to the money, and, um, they're gonna choose the vendors that's supposed to do the work inside our traditional public school. So, I'm still asking for that, I've been asking for it, and I'm about a little bit tired of asking for it, but you just got on board, I've never specifically asked you, so I'm asking you now, can you please give me the policy and tell me how that money is supposed to be given to the traditional public school?
Thank you, Ms. Cole. Next speaker, Jalissa Vasquez. Not appearing. Wendy Soto.
I'm right here.
Are you Jalissa? Okay.
Good evening, board members, good evening. I'm here once again to talk about Barnder High School.
Ms. Vasquez, will you state your name and address?
So, Jalissa Vasquez, Littleton Avenue.
Thank you.
Um, I'm having an issue. Every month, starting from September, I've been going, if you check the security log, you will see my name. I'm constantly in that school, I don't know how they would get tired of seeing my face, but I'm tired of them. Um, on Friday, must have been three weeks ago, um, my daughter and my son, they go to Barnder, they stated that the principal and staff members were had, were gonna have a discussion about the school policy hoodies and jackets. They took one first period that they have gym to talk about, hoodies and jackets, the whole entire period. And then the principal stated that if you don't like it here, there's other schools like Shavas and Central. There's no need for her to do that. I mean, that's pointless. For me, that principal should not be there. She's always threatening the kids, "If you don't do this, you don't do that, you're gonna get started in detention." She doesn't engage with these students. That is ridiculous. Then an A period, my son tells me, "I missed my Spanish class because they pulled him out." He had, he was fully uniform, they pulled him out because he had his hoodie in top of him, just standing here. He said, "They could have told me to put it away, I forgot it had it on top of my, you know, my neck." They pulled him to the auditorium to sit once again to talk about the school policy about hoodies and jackets, which I say, if you're missing a whole period of class, doesn't make sense. Then, then he's like, "I missed a class that I have a project on Monday." I said, "This school is ridiculous." I go on Monday, try to talk to the school, even when I'm there, I'm, I'm calling the Board of Education and letting them know, "Could you please give this information to the superintendent, somebody to help me out?", because this is ridiculous, don't matter. So, I sit in the main office, they said, "Oh, you gotta speak to the person that gives out suspension." The principal comes, 'cause I guess she knows that I'm there, and she goes to me, I'm sitting, and she's like, "Oh, you, come here." Like, that's not how you greet parents. So, I deny, I was like, "I'm not gonna talk to you," and so, I'm not gonna tell you what else I told her, 'cause I can't stay here. But she's very nasty, so she decided to call Mr. Alvedelli, the vice principal, to come speak to me. Well, I was in the hallway with the Board of Ed, he's like, "Could I speak to you?" I said, "Sure, no problem." He introduced himself, I know him very well, we talk, and I let him know, like, that does not make sense for the principal to have, she should do it at lunchtime. She wanna have these little meetings about hoodies and jackets, it's on the stuff, do that lunch, don't do it when they have to be in class. That does not make sense. Then he states, "Well, your son should have never got pulled out." He looks at my son's, you know, records, and at my daughter, he's like, "Oh, they're great students, they got great, my daughter got honor." I said, "I have no issues." This still makes sense. I know we have to come up with something. This principal at Barnder High is ridiculous. Every day when I, every time that I go there, I have parents there, two, about three weeks ago, a parent there was stating that she wanted a press, um, put a complaint against a, a teacher.
Ms. Vasquez, thank you very much.
Because a teacher threw a chair at a student. Barnder is ridiculous. Every day is something going on. Just today, there was a fight.
Thank you very much, Ms. Vasquez.
At Park Avenue. We gotta do something at that school.
Next speaker, Wendy Soto. Next speaker, Yolanda Johnson.
Yolanda Johnson, 439 South 12th Street, North New Jersey. So, just to follow up with what Denise said, is Shavas still a community school? I didn't hear a response to that. And forty-four thousand of the voters voted in this referendum, twenty-two thousand answered the question. What are we doing as the board to inform the newcomers to the city that may not be aware that we have an elected board, that they can vote? What are we doing as a board? And then the next one is, I just submitted to the board some information, I spoke with the director, Ms. Montgomery, on last year regarding the dental school. Ms. Valerie was out because she had surgery, but we did make connection with Central for the dental school. We have not heard anything yet. I left a professional profile of Ms. Joyce Bryant, who has a dental school, so that Central or North Public School high schoolers can do some kind of internship with her dental school. And then, just to follow up with what the young man said, what are we doing with the community-based organizations or the organizations that North Public Schools are proud of with? How are we measuring their outcomes? And I urge you, because Asia, you're really concerned about children and their privacy, to investigate these organizations that's doing surveys with the children without their parents' permission. You need to look into that. One other thing about the bus tickets, should we have like a designated person to reach out to the families and then follow up with the families to see it, see them through that they're receiving bus tickets? Because my daughter experienced something here at university, and I spoke to Mr. Mendez already, but I felt a need to put it on record, because if I'm experiencing it, then other parents may be experiencing it as well, so I will look into that too. Thank you.
Next speaker, Chee Colter.
Good evening, Superintendent Leon, distinguished board members, and ladies and gentlemen of the North Public. My name is Chee Colter, 863 South 13th Street. Enough has happened in 2018. As we look to 2019, I want us to take away of a positivity, we wanna see the board working as a hundred percent unified body, and we're looking forward to a school-wide interactive framework for academic transformation and educational metamorphosis in 2019. Forty states, including Washington DC, have enacted laws directing school districts, boards of educations, and schools to implement family engagement policies. New, uh, New Jersey- New, uh, New Jersey has a law, uh, Title 6A, sixteen through seventeen. Uh, the code provides a relevant part that the code of student conduct shall be based in parent, student, and community involvement, which represents where possible the composition of schools and the community. With that state law that allow, that allows for, uh, family engagement departments to engage with the community, we're now at the dawn of 2019, and the time has come before Newark to implement and construct an Amistad Parent Advisory Council, ladies and gentlemen. We have reached that cortex in time where the Amistad parents and the Amistad children from Amistad zip codes need a formal council of parents within your district that the superintendent can oversee in such a way where we can, in fact, remap portions of the curriculum, kindergarten through twelfth grade, to include Amistad-infused curriculum points, uh, to bring down, uh, some of our attendance challenges. The other thing I wanted to touch on is the needs assessment that we've heard Superintendent Leon touch on, uh, for, uh, board members, 'cause you all have been duly elected by the public. That needs assessment also involves the geographic and demographic data on admissions. So whenever the school board itself sees a problem in an enrollment system, you all can, in fact, have a discussion so that the superintendent can actually change whatever is needed in the enrollment system. If you see that minority students, boys and girls, are under-enrolled in magnet schools, you all have the vested powers to do that. The other thing we need is a literacy revolution, pre-K through twelfth grade, well, pre-K through third grade. We need some sort of a literacy program where high school graduating students who are not going to college very far but that are in Essex County can actually work with early childhood up to third grade, so that kids can begin to become strong readers before they get to fourth grade. The Green Building Council is something we need to partner with, but in the last twenty seconds, I would just like to say, board members, whatever happened in the past, happened in the past, but moving forward as far as affirmative action, for four-hundred-and-eighty million dollars to be spent from two thousand and seven to two thousand and seventeen, and minority and economic disadvantaged businesses to only get three-point-eight percent of it, that's the problem I had with the last president, and I'm hoping that our lady president will take a stronger posture on affirmative action and its set-aside program, if need be, going up to the county and calling Mr. Ricky Timberlake, who rolled out a fantastic program for the county assets, so that we can have that scale of program, uh, in North Public Schools for Mr. Roger Leon to oversee. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Colter. Next speaker, Eva White.
Eva White, 765 Broad Street. I pay rent there, so I'm gonna get that address.
All right.
Um, so I wanna talk about community schools. I told y'all at the beginning of the year, for those who know, I'm gonna sound like a broken record, and for those of us who know records, when you wanna stop hearing the same thing and same thing, you gotta move the needle. So I wanna know where y'all are moving the needle. My son attends a community school, there's a South Ward Community School Initiative. I am very well versed in the sus- ah, sustainable community school model. However, this model has not been implemented. I think some of the issues that my son discussed will be addressed with the community school model. I did say it to you, Superintendent Leon. I said it to the principal, I said it in an email, and I also said it to her in her face, 'cause I don't throw rocks and hide, that she is not trained in this model. It is a bottom-up model. The staff, the teachers, the parents, the students, all of us receive the same level of training when it comes to the community school model. They're getting money and they're doing programs, but no one has done any training to implement this model, okay? And the purpose that we all get the same level of training, so we can hold each other accountable, because Soian has the same accountability as the parent, as the principal, although we know she may make, or the building administrator may make the executive decision 'cause by law, they have the liability. But it's more of a collective effort, not a solo effort. Uh, one time when she said to me, "Me and my staff," it's not "me and my staff," it's all of us. And I experienced as a parent, it doesn't seem, I know in the beginning, when she had a principals meeting before school started, she wanted these committees. I have not heard anything about these committees for parental involvement. There are things that I can do as a parent that she cannot do as an administrator, and I think it needs to be a collaborative effort. So Superintendent Leon and board, I am beckoning you, we need to implement this model. I am familiar about what's going on at Belmont Runyon Community School. However, there are four other schools in this initiative, and I really wonder, are those operating with the community school model and not just getting the money? Uh, we had this outside agency to come in and talk about evaluation. We can be trained to do our own evaluation and have a continuous quality improvement, but we need the training. We could train them, I got people in this room, I'm one of them, that are very well versed. I can think about four people, five people in this room right now that can provide the training to the South Ward Community School Initiative. And I think that's something we need to do. It needs to be in-house. We don't need no one to come from outside the city to come, you know, that can support us, but we can do the training. There's a lot of information out there, where we can do it, where we don't have to, we can get a stipend, not necessarily pay some people, you know, but we do need to eat. So that's what I wanna say.
Superintendent Leon.
Um, just, I think that was an extremely important, is the, um, January sixteenth community, uh, conversation that we're having. Part of what we will, uh, do, starting in June of twenty-twenty, uh, sorry, June of twenty-nineteen, is implement a one-year strategic plan called NPS Clarity 2020. And the June two thousand, um, the June sixteen, two thousand and nineteen meeting will be very, very important to bring about much-needed clarity. Part of what the objective of that work, um, will be to fuel from the NPS Clarity 2020 Strategic Plan, um, the probably, well, definitely the school district's first-ever ten-year strategic plan called The Next Decade. I say it's called that the group of people that will be working to make it happen, um, may decide in the end to call it something different, but it will be a ten-year strategic plan. One of the things that the, the one-year strategic plan will do is to kinda clarify what has happened in this city over the last twenty-three years and to suggest that we must do better than that. One of the things that we do really well here in my city is we claim to do something and then do it our own way, as opposed to actually claim to do a research model the way the research model was defined. It's like, we say, "We're gonna do project, whatever its name is," but when we bring it to the city of Newark, we decide to Newark it. We decide to go, "Well, we're gonna do this instead of that, and we're gonna do that instead of the other thing." And in the end, we go, "Why didn't it accomplish anything? 'Cause you never did it, that's why. You, you, you invented something that isn't research-proven." So I'll tell you this, the January sixteenth meeting will provide a lot of clarity, but know this, ten million dollars from Facebook money was assigned by the superintendent previously to the Community Schools Initiative. Twenty million dollars of a school improvement grant was given to the, uh, South Ward Community Schools Initiative. And in addition to that, the South Ward Alliance has sought out, uh, uh, the, um, the, um, yes, the South Ward Alliance has sought out and received an additional thirty million dollars. That's sixty million dollars in less than three years' time, and I have zero student achievement, I have poor attendance, and I have a lot of people who are getting money in their wallets, but that money is not arriving into actionable items that improve student achievement. What I bring to the superintendency is two schools that I improved, and I improved them with my teaching staff members, with my parents, and with my student body. My student body was always at the heart of solving the problems at both schools. So I assure you that this city will see what a true community school is when we move forward in actually bringing one about.
Next speaker, Diane Galluso. Vanessa Roper.
Vanessa.
I'm Vanessa. Next speaker, Donald Jackson. Next speaker, Donna Jackson. Next speaker, Thomas Luna. Good evening, Mr. Luna.
Um, good evening. My name is Thomas Luna, I live at 243 Halsey Street. Um, several things that I wanna mention first. Uh, the first is always the good. Um, for the, the board and, uh, council president, uh, council president, you bring me to it, is that the retreat, for the people that I know that went there with y'all, they were just, like, astounded by the things that y'all were going over. Not only because of the necessity of the information that you were given to make good decisions coming in the future, but also because of the type of discourse that you were having about those issues. And for me, who knows many of you personally, and just like, hearing other people talk about the work that you are doing in a positive light, definitely meant a lot, and I know that this is the board to help us move forward. The second thing goes to you, Ms. Val. Um, at our last business meeting, uh, Ms. Val broke down the, um, current state of the budget and its projection in a way that I have never seen it done before, and mind you, I have been in front of senators and legislators and liaisons and all these other people, and the clarity of which you broke it down, and the precision of which you broke it down, I think, one, is extremely commendable, two, makes me proud to be here in Newark, and three, lets us know that RBA is the best when it comes around, when it comes to the state of New Jersey. So it was really, really great to see that, Ms. Val, thank you. Uh, in terms of questions, um, the, the biggest one I have is where we are now, right? Inspired by what Ms. Val presented, uh, the question of where we are now is on my mind, and I mean that to prompt. The first is academically. In the start of this year, this board and our superintendent had the courage to give us the data of where our kids were on PARC at the end of the year in the raw, right? And that had never been done before, and let me just premise that, like, PARC, we know, is not the end-all-be-all, but the scores do matter. And what I commend this board on is giving those numbers and that data raw, and what we know is that they were not great, and that is just saying it lightly. And so my question now, at the middle of the year, just like Ms. Val was presenting us, is where are we academically? Where are our kids in terms of the outcomes that they are supposed to have and the outcomes that we promised us every single year, right now? Where are we? And if we don't know that answer, that's fine, I'm wondering if we can get our heads together to figure out how to best answer that question, but if we're projecting how kids are going to do, I'm wondering, right here in the month of December, how are they doing? The second half of that, and it goes along with what Ms. Val presented, is the budgets. As we know, um, for better or for worse, principals are their own CFOs, and we know that there has been a trend over the last few years of principals not necessarily utilizing their money in the best way possible. And I mean that because we have a number of principals giving that money back to the district at the end of the year, and personally, I don't know of a single school that cannot use additional funds. And so, in very, um, very similar fashion for Ms. Val, I'm wondering where we are financially with our high schools, our middle schools, and our elementary schools, right? If, if the district is required to give an annual update of the budget, I think principals should be required as well, because it is those resources that are gonna move the needle whichever way we need to move forward, for kids and for families. So again, I'm wondering where we are now, and I look forward to any and all responses there, and continuation working with each of you in the year to come. Thank you very much, and happy holidays.
Thank you, Tony. Next speaker, Lyndon Brown.
Good evening, good evening, hello. Good evening, Lyndon Brown, 227 Sixth Street, Newark. Um, I just wanna first commend the board and our superintendent for recognizing our students tonight. Our past several, uh, superintendents have seized that, um, wonderful, wonderful recognition tonight, and I was just so pleased and proud of all of our students tonight, and I look forward to future recognitions of our students and parents and, and our staff across the district, because there are people who do phenomenal jobs and they should be recognized for their efforts. I heard the superintendent talk tonight about, you know, doing a facility-by-facility audit, I think that's very much needed, there are schools that are leaking, uh, you go into some of these schools, there's no toilet tissue, no paper towel, the soap dishes are broken, there's no doors on the bathroom, kids have no privacy, they have to sit on it, on the toilet, having all the classmates, the schoolmates walk by. I think that's a disgrace. Every bathroom should have a door on those, um, toilets, so let's look at getting that done, because our kids are complaining, and some of them only wanna go to bathroom because they, you know, worried about, you know, the lack of privacy. Um, I also wanna talk to you tonight about, um, cultural competency training, as our, our student speaker recommended this evening, I think that's much needed. Um, and I just add Belmont Runyon at every school where there's a lack of, um, cultural competency, um, being exhibited by staff and administration. Um, guidance councils are inaccessible for many of our students, um, and particularly at Barringer. I've been working with so many of the students who have not done their financial aid, can't get a guidance council to help them with their college applications, can't get the guidance council to, um, help them register for the SAT. They go to the guidance department, the guidance council tells them they have to do captaire duty. I don't know why that is, we have eleven vice principals at Barringer, guidance council should not have to do captaire duty, their first priority should be the students. We have a lot of students who have not done their college essays, their personal statements, financial aid, haven't even registered for SAT because of a lack of guidance support, and I'm meeting with some more students tomorrow, but it's just an overwhelming, um, task across the district to help so many students, um, with the years of overspassing, who have not done half the things they should be doing as seniors. Credit analysis is definitely needed for a lot of our seniors who are supposed to be graduating, uh, their parents are unaware of where they are, and so are they. Um, I also wanna talk tonight about, you know, um, painting at our schools, some of the, the, the walls and the ceilings, I mean, some of our schools look like abandoned warehouses, where you have graffiti up there, nobody, you know, paints over it, if they do paint over it, after a while, you see all these blotches. I look at 30th Avenue School, and it looks like a abandoned warehouse. So, Ms. Jackson, I would like you to recommend some painting going on over there. I also wanna talk about the fact that when you have institute recognitions at some schools for honor roll and, um, perfect attendance, and then other schools not having anything, that's a problem. I went to Arts High on Friday, uh, a wonderful concert, Barringer had a wonderful holiday concert, um, some schools have had honor roll, perfect attendance, recognitions, other schools have, we gotta wait till the end of the year to, to give incentives and rewards. There should be ongoing every cycle, students should be getting a certificate, a trophy, a plaque for perfect attendance and honor roll, that should now all happen in gym. So we need to look at that, as it's a superintendent, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brown. Next speaker, Marquis Akil Lewis. That concludes our speakers list, and now we're gonna move on to item twelve point zero, finance and operation votes.
Do we have a motion to approve all of the items within section twelve point oh, which is twelve point one through... Through twelve point twenty-two. Do we have a motion?
No, she was not. She was not, Ms. Gaddy.
Do we have a motion for items twelve point oh to twelve point twenty-two?
Counsel, um, are we skipping out facilities twelve point twenty-three?
I'm sorry. On my, on my list, it goes through twenty-two. You have a twenty-three?
Yes.
Is that the list for tonight's meeting, Asia, or is that the...
I didn't intend to leave it off, so if you have it on your agenda, all of the items within twelve point oh. No, Ms. Norton is saying there's a twenty-three.
Twelve point twenty-two's facilities.
Okay.
Pause on the financing operation.
Yeah, but ours stopped at twenty-two. That's fine, then.
Do we have a motion for... Do we have a motion for all of the items under 12.0? 12.1 to 12.23.
Motion.
Ms. Norton, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bledsoe, any discussion of any of the items? Any questions by board members? We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Gaddy?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Next, we need a motion for all of the items under 13.0, General Counsel, and that includes the additional item 13.4, which was added this evening. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Board Member Bledsoe?
Do you know if the language is going to be added? Because I would like to know specifically what I'm voting on. And I don't think the resolution is updated. I have that, but it should be listed in the resolution.
Do we second and have a discussion?
Usually we have a discussion after a second.
That's correct. Do we have a motion? Ms. Norton, do we have a second?
We have a discussion after we second the motion.
Okay.
Can we have a second, please?
Second.
Board Member Bledsoe?
Who seconded? Who was it? Ms. Gomez? Mr. Bledsoe, your question is, what is the language of the motion on the item that was added?
Yeah, it should be inputted.
We can input it, but we can also state it, so board members know it. It's a motion to re-adopt the admissions policy, which is file code 5111, as amended, as shown in the copy that's in front of each board member, and that was discussed at the retreat on Saturday.
You don't have it, but you can pull it up?
It was not added electronically.
But we have a hard copy in front of us.
I know what we have. I'm asking the question. When you're discussing an item, we should at least have it up there, so the public can know what we're discussing.
Madam Chair, can we read the change into the...
Specifically what was changed, too.
Read the change into the public record?
Yeah.
The copy that each of you have in front of you is formatted to be the same as all of the other policies that are online, at least those that are in the 9,000 series, which have been changed since the return to local control. The changes are several corrections to refer to the board rather than the advisory board or the Newark Public Schools. But the only substantive change is in section 5C, which appears on page 7 of the copy in front of you. And that is to change the language regarding section C, children of non-resident staff members, it would now say non-resident employees. The language which read... I'm going to first read what's deleted, to be deleted. And that is, employees of the district would be expected to make payment of tuition and in accordance with policy for other non-resident pupils. And the language which would be put in instead is that children of non-resident employees of the district may be enrolled in the Newark Public Schools, space permitting and upon approval of the superintendent.
Questions?
Madam Chair, Board Member Norton? So I'm going to abstain from this vote because I need clarity on children. We discussed at the retreat that that term was going to be... Going to be explained better. And then also, my concern is also seats being taken up by other, by employees that Newark residents, students should be filling. I do believe that we have incredible schools, we have incredible seats. And I do want to ensure that our students, who are residents here in the city of Newark, are occupying those seats before others. I do support our staff sending their children here to our schools. But I do want there to be better protections on seats that are of high quality to be Newark residents. So I will be abstaining from the 13.4.
Madam Chair. Board Member Owens?
Thank you. So I'm actually kind of echoing part of the sentiment of Board Member Norton. This is definitely something I was molding back and forth in my mind. I definitely understand the idea that having children of employees of the district who don't live in Newark would help to boost the morale, in a sense. I definitely think that would occur. But at the same time, what would probably more expected of me would be that these employees actually live in Newark, because that would help to really boost the city as a whole and be able to bring those individuals, not only their income and the taxes that they're paying in those other municipalities, but also just the idea that they're at the Dollar Tree, they're at the ShopRite, they're seeing everyone else in the community. So for me, I would actually like to see the employees actually live in Newark.
Madam Chair.
Board Member Gaddy?
And I agree with what was stated by the previous board members. I will be abstaining. As we discussed at the retreat on Saturday, I just would hope that those teachers move into Teacher Village or somewhere in our community. As I stated, when I was growing up, attending public school, my teachers lived on my block in my community. And then I just had some concerns as to the placement of where those students would actually, what schools the students would attend. And I know the superintendent said they would have no preferential treatment, but I am just not willing to support this as it is.
Madam Chair.
Board Member Bledsoe?
I echo my colleagues as well. The difficult decision to support this, we don't have data, and we don't know specifically if there's a need. I know that it was echoed at the retreat that some folks did approach the administration about this. But it's hard for me to support it without the proper data. Secondly, I would like to know if this is going to apply to early childhood class, or early childhood education. As we know, in this district, it's been an issue where folks who don't live in Newark actually take advantage of the early childhood site without it being offered in the districts that they're from. And because it's free here in Newark, and people not allowing our residents to take advantage of that opportunity, it just wasn't clear to me if we're talking about those placements as well. So I will abstain from this as well.
Okay.
Any further discussion? We'll do a roll call? Mr. Bledsoe?
Abstain.
Ms. Gaddy?
Abstain.
Sorry, is this on every, I'm taking a block? Just want to make sure everybody is clear, because I thought we want a block.
Motion was as a block.
So should we remove this item?
Individually.
I think we should just separate it, because clearly separated.
Are we modifying the motion then to have first a motion on the added item 13.4? So that's what we'll take a vote on now. And then separately, we will do 13.2, 13.3. So board members are clear, this is only on 13.4, the added item. Mr. Bledsoe abstained. Ms. Gaddy abstained. Is that correct?
Correct.
Ms. Gomez?
Abstain.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Abstain.
Ms. Norton?
Abstain.
Ms. Owens?
No.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
We have two yeses votes, one no vote, and 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 abstentions. Unless the abstentions are on an item where a majority of the full board is required, the abstentions, as I understand your bylaws, abstentions are interpreted as acquiescing with a majority.
Well, I say no. Well, I wasn't aware of that, so I'm going to say no, too.
I'd like to change my vote to no.
Madam Chair, I think that instead of voting on this tonight, we should have the administration pull it from the agenda and go back to the drawing board to discuss it.
Sorry, Madam President.
We need to finish the vote, lay out an order.
I appreciate the recommendation of Board Member Bledsoe. But we do have an enrollment process that has already begun. So the objective was, if the board was affirming this, to share that with the school district. Because we have an inordinate number of staff members who are interested in staying here after the school day ends, instead of having to travel to go pick up their children, by actually bringing their children into the school district. At no point in time was the idea that this policy was intended to take up the seats of any student. We very well know that seats are taken from Newark children, and they're not necessarily in Newark Public Schools where those seats are taken. But for the record, the idea behind this was to actually motivate our staff not to leave at the end of the day. The whole idea about them moving into the city of Newark is awesome. Yes, I would applaud everyone who's watching from outside of the city of Newark to also move into the city of Newark. It is an objective to eventually get there. I would just like to know, for people on the record, where you stand.
So, Madam Chair.
Board Member Hill?
So from the retreat that we had on Saturday, I guess it really wasn't all the way clear for me, and I'm speaking only for myself, is when Board Member Bledsoe asked a question about where were these dollars coming from. So I guess that's a concern for me. So that's where I stand. I don't know if it's coming out of our regular budget, because these children aren't going to be Newark residents. And so we all know that the money follows the child. So if they're not here in Newark, where is the money coming from?
So Reggie, I think Reggie has to finish his vote.
I'm going to vote now.
Well, we've had a vote on it. If there's going to be a separate vote, there needs to be a separate motion.
You're rescinding your original vote.
You just recalled for us to vote, and we all just voted. You want us to do it a third time?
I have a vote that was taken on the motion, and that resulted in the motion passing. If someone wants to change the vote and wants to change the roll call, that would require another motion.
But Ms. Liz, if we're discussing a resolution, it's on the floor now. So during the vote, you can technically take your vote back.
The vote was completed, and the motion passed. If you want to retake the vote...
Motion to retake the vote.
Second.
Jesus Christ.
Well, is it a motion to retake the vote, or a new motion? A motion on the merits of the proposal. I just want to clarify what the motion is.
Motion to revote on item 1314.
13.4.
13.4.
This is a motion on yes or no.
And to rescind the abstention vote, so that we can change it to a no vote. Do you need any further clarification?
Do board members understand what the motion is?
Yes. No. I need some clarification. So you're saying we cannot abstain at all from this?
No, no, no.
It passed because there were five abstentions, two yeses. Once you guys realize that it passed, you want to rescind your vote for a no, so it can fail. So now we're going to...
So I can still abstain?
We're going to put it on the floor again. You can still abstain, and everyone else can take their position.
Madam Chair?
Thank you.
For the record, I don't want this to fail. I think that there should be another conversation somewhere in committee. The superintendent is making a recommendation. And for me, I cannot support this tonight because we do not have the proper data. Once we get the data of the need of non-resident children, employees of this district who wants us to do this, then I don't have a problem with supporting it.
But Reggie, the enrollment process opened. You will have to allow them to go through the enrollment process, like every other Newark resident goes through the process, so we can retrieve the data and get you that response.
I think you're right. The issue is that if we were to wait, we would have to wait until the end of January, where this would come before the board for a vote again, which I would be, I don't have a problem pulling it and doing that. The issue is that that only gives the... By the time that vote occurs, assuming that you all affirmed it, that whatever were the questions that need to be answered were answered, the problem is that the window of time for me to communicate to the staff is going to be very short, because the Newark enrolls ends on the 15th of February. So it's just an issue of timing. But my thinking was, that's why we presented it at the board retreat, was to have you engage in whatever questions you needed, entertain it this evening, so that when I send them their Happy Holidays email on Friday, that I can incorporate into them. These are some of the things that I want you to be thinking about during your winter break, because you will need to go through all of the necessary paperwork in your respective school districts to leave there. We have staff members across the whole entire organization, from non-instructional to instructional, who have indicated to me that back in the day, during the Bolden administration, in this school district, you were allowed to work in the district, not live in the city, and have your child attend school. And so they assumed, without me prompting, that that would be something that I would want to do. Those conversations began in August. In terms of the data that you would want to satisfy, what your questions are, I'm sure that we can still provide that for you. It's just the issue, my problem is just the timing of it right now.
Madam Chair. Board Member Gomez?
Yes. Superintendent, if you can clarify where the money, how the money follows the student, and if it does.
I'm definitely going to have the school business administrator clarify any questions along those lines. But prior to that, if it's okay with the board, the definition of children means that you had them, that you are their parent or legal guardian. That's the definition in the state of your child, and those are the children I'm talking about. I'm not talking about families, the way people interpret families. I'm not talking about the employee's cousin's brother's sister. I'm talking about the employee's child. That means they had them at birth. They're their legal guardian today, and there's documentation that proves that.
Board Member Owens?
Thank you. Just two points quickly on that last point. Possibly we can look into any sort of transferring of student funds. I don't know exactly what the law may or may not say. I know that at least there was some sort of conversation about that in terms of inter-district choice, if you will. So maybe that will assist some of the board members in understanding that funding can come from other districts. So possibly some research into that. But secondly, Mr. Superintendent, certainly with all due respect, but having this, taking this vote into January would not preclude any of our employees of thinking about this over the break. Obviously, it would mean amending your email to say it's possible that the board will approve this, so you should just keep this in mind. And also recognizing that the admissions process and that application is not based on first come, first served. It doesn't matter when you actually fill out the application, because all of the information is dumped into that algorithm at once. So I don't think that this really would stop any of the employees who you say have expressed desire.
I appreciate, not to not go back to Ms. Gomez, but your first answer is what answers the Gomez question. Instead of having our staff pay tuition, which some people have been asked to do, and as a result, our staff members have transferred their children outside of the district, there are procedures actually in place in law that would allow us to secure the dollars from the school districts in which the children actually reside in, as opposed to penalizing or charging a parent for tuition. That's how we would go about the funding piece. To Mr. Bledsoe's important point is that to get the information, it's just going to take us time. So the process would allow for... I also want to take the opportunity to thank you for just clarifying for the folks who are watching that there is a process, and it doesn't matter when you actually apply, that in fact, the application... matter when you actually apply, that in fact, the application...you could be the last person to apply, and that doesn't make your chances, you know, later than that. So, upon, you know, hearing this vote, that'll just let me know if I need to do any additional work to bring this again to the board next month, and your answer actually helps me a lot, and I appreciate it.
Madam Chair, since no one seconded Board Member Gaddy's motion, I'd like to...oh, you did? Well, I would like to ask if Board Member Norton would take back her second, so that I could make the motion that we vote to resend our vote on item thirteen point four, and then move this discussion to the Governors Committee.
Second.
And Madam Chair.
And Operations as well? Operations as well?
Finance Committee. And Madam Chair, I know that there was a question that the BA would respond to the finance, and I noticed that Ms. Wilson did not respond. Are you going to respond?
We're trying to allow Ms. Wilson to respond once the board members are done with their questions and comments.
And, you know, and with all due respect, I find this to be a very serious issue for our, not only the citizens of this city, as has been raised, but for our employees as well. And so, what we're not going to do is have this argument bouncing from committee to committee, committee, and allow people to conduct business like that. Mr. Bledsoe is correct that where we agreed as a body was that this enrollment type of question lives in Operations. The only reason why it was placed in Governance was because I attend the Governance meeting, and I do see it as a governance issue, and it wasn't a slight to the Operations Committee. It's just, given the time period, I was able...I wasn't going to be able to meet at the Operations Committee meeting, nor did I want the folks who lead that to have the burden of doing that. I wanted to carry the burden, because I want to send a message to my staff that I believe in them.
No problem, Superintendent.
So, what we amended it to say is going to Operations?
Can Valerie give her explanation? Ms. Wilson, please. Board Member Gaddy, thank you.
Madam Chair, members of the board, members of the community, this issue requires some further research on my part in terms of looking at funding, because we are talking about employees' children attending schools in our district. This will be a choice, and Board Member Owens talked about as a choice district. What we need to remember is that choice districts operate both ways. So, if we choose to become a choice district, we would then have to pay for students who left our district to go to other districts, and that's one of the primary reasons we had not opted to be a choice district. Now, Superintendent Leon and I have not discussed that. We might discuss it and see whether that's something we want to change, but I want to caution the board on that. Funding does follow the child when residency and all of those things are in place. Here, we are talking about an exception. So, while those children may be counted in our next October fifteenth count, where...after they're registered in the district. So, let's say they register now, and they start in September of nineteen. The earliest their funding, if funding were to follow, would appear in our budget, would be September of twenty. Okay? Because remember, the October fifteenth count is always a year behind. So, it's a complex issue that does not necessarily have a simple black and white answer. So, I would ask that if the board were to discuss this some more, I would want to do some research on it.
There's a motion on the floor to resend the prior vote and refer the proposed readoption of the policy to committee.
I was told that there was a second to Board Member Gaddy's motion, or if there wasn't?
There's a motion by Ms. Gaddy, seconded by Ms. Norton.
Wouldn't she have to take...Ms. Norton have to take it back in order, or no? Because she seconded. So, doesn't she need to take back her second, so we remove that?
To rescind the vote, to remove Ms. Gaddy's motion, okay.
I rescind my second.
You rescinded the second. We have a different motion by Ms. Owens.
Yes, yes.
Do we have a second?
Do I need to say again? So, I would like to make the...
Dawn seconded when you put the motion on the board.
Ms. Haynes is second?
Which the only...yes.
But the modification should be to Operations, am I correct? Operations, operations based on what the superintendent said.
Yes.
The motion is to rescind the prior vote and refer the proposed readoption of the policy to the Operations Committee. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any questions? We'll do a roll call. Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Gaddy?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we need a motion to adopt items thirteen point two and thirteen point three on the agenda. Ms. Norton? Ms. Hill? Any discussion? Any questions by board members? Mr. Bledsoe? The motion is to adopt items thirteen point two and thirteen point three.
Yes.
Board Member Gomez, do you understand what's...you need the agenda, or?
Yeah, it was on there. I got it.
Okay.
Mr. Bledsoe is a yes. Ms. Gaddy?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we need a motion to adopt the items in the fourteen section, that is fourteen point one to fourteen point seven. Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Hill? Any discussion on any of the items in the fourteen section? Mr. Bledsoe?
I'd like to be noted as a yes on fourteen point three, four, five, six, seven, and fourteen point two abstain.
Ms. Gaddy?
Abstain. All of them.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, we need a motion on items within the fifteen section, that is fifteen point one to fifteen point three.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Bledsoe and Ms. Norton?
Until fifteen point one to fifteen point four?
Okay, again, on my copy, there's no fifteen point four? Motion through fifteen point four.
Motion.
Ms. Norton and Mr. Bledsoe? Any discussion? Any questions by board members? Mr. Bledsoe?
Yes.
Ms. Gaddy?
Yes.
Ms. Gomez?
Yes.
Ms. Haynes?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Norton?
Yes.
Ms. Owens?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I just want the record to reflect, the motion had me abstain on the entire resolution. I just wanted to be noted on this specific item that I abstained on. So, I just wanted to make sure that's on the record. Thank...yes. Thank you.
That was the twelve items. Finance was twelve point oh, it was all of those. No items were pulled from consent. We have a motion to adjourn? Ms. Norton, do we have a second? Mr. Bledsoe, any discussion? All in favor?
Everyone have a happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Happy Kwanzaa.
Happy holidays, everybody. Happy New Year.